I call the meeting to order. It's 6:30 on July 13, 2016. This is the planning board. The first item on the agenda is a special permit hearing for Lisa Berkman for a conversion of a single-family home to a two-family residence. There's a clipboard going around and everybody needs to sign in to record who was here and it also helps with doing the minutes so we get everybody's name. The procedure of the hearing will be the petitioner will present their proposal. We'll open the floor to questions and comments. If we can't answer the question then the petitioner may have to answer the question if it's something we can't answer. And then we will -- we may close the hearing and vote on it tonight depending on whether or not more information is needed. Folks that want to be recognized needs to raise your hand and we have a microphone here. It helps with the video if you're speaking to the microphone. Otherwise, the video can't record your voice. It just becomes noise. So if you could please come up with a microphone, state your name and address for the record so that your comments can be recorded. The Berkmans are up.
I am Lisa Berkman and I was here a month ago for an earlier review of what I'd like to do. I am approaching the planning board for permission to convert a one-family home into a two-family home by adding a small addition behind the garage. Mark will talk more about the specifics of it. We seem to have a large enough house that already has four bedrooms and three baths. But living in a multi-generational family, the floor plan is not working very well. And so I would like an addition attached behind the garage. And why I'm asking for a two-family status is because I would really like to have a small kitchen. And with a small kitchen, that makes it a dwelling which makes it another process that I have to go through. I'm essentially -- the flow of this addition always incorporates it back into the main house. We still consider ourselves a multi-general, multi-generational family.
My name is Mark Gelot. I live on Elm Street in Hatfield. I'm the architect on this project. So I'll just explain a little bit about the details of the project.
Can I hear you?
Does this amplify?
No.
This does -- okay, I'll just talk louder, sorry. So I'm the architect on this project. I'll explain a little bit about the site plan and then the building plan and the total project. The site plan is here and it shows, you can see in red, this is the existing house. It's a two-story colonial house. You can see the elevation of the front, what the front of the house looks like from the street. The addition portion that we're talking about, which would be the additional one-bedroom unit, is shown in yellow here. So Gore Avenue is here on that side of the building. The house is here and the addition sits behind the garage. When you add a second dwelling, you need to establish more parking. So part of the issue here is establishing a total of six parking spots in the total package. There's a two-car garage here. There's room for two cars here and we'll be adding a space additionally on the parking on the driveway side. And also, if needed, there'll be a guest parking spot on the full width of the driveway, which is 25, which is actually 25 feet wide. So that takes care of the six required parking spaces for this project. The floor plan of the project consists of a one-bedroom, one-bath, and kind of an open living kitchen dining area. So you can see the plan here, it's behind the garage. There's an entrance off of the side of the garage which would come in here from the outside. You could also enter from inside the garage. So you could go inside from the breezeway through the garage and enter into the unit through the garage. You would enter into a little entryway. There's a kitchen here, a small kitchen, which is seven feet by 10 feet. A little dining area here for a table and then a living area which is 16 by 17. A single bath with a shower, a vanity, a toilet, and a washer dryer. The bedroom is on the backside with two closets there. It's a one-story addition. You can see from here, this is the front of the structure here. You can barely see the addition from the street. It doesn't make much of a presence. From the southern side, which is this side, this would be the elevation shown here with the entry. That's kind of the living room section, the bath, and the bedroom section in the back. The total size of it is 1,060 square feet. It has a crawl space basement. It's about 42 feet long and it's about 20 feet wide in the back and about 28 feet wide towards the front. That pretty much explains the floor plan and the totality of the project. I don't know if there are any questions I can answer about the site plan or the floor plan. I'd be happy to do that.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
That addition there is --
Say your name.
-- 24 Gore Avenue.
Thank you.
That addition there is bigger than some of the houses on the street.
Okay. I realize that. Yes, ma'am, in the back?
Betty Koch, Elm Street. I've been in this town my whole life and as Mr. Webby knows, that's a lot of years.
So you wanted to step up to the microphone. Are you getting that?
Barely.
I think you can hear me. Hatfield --
When you want to watch this, your neighbors want to watch it, they won't hear you.
The video doesn't get the sound though, that's the problem.
Okay. Do I need to state my name again?
Yes.
Betty Koch, Elm Street. I've been in this town my whole life. Right, Paul?
Yes.
Many years. Hatfield is a very special town, partly because we have bylaws and rules that protect us, the residents, and they keep our town's rural character. This board, I never realized until I watched the Scotland Road hearing, no offense, I never realized how important this board is because your rulings dictate the direction of the character of our town. It affects all of us whether we live near any of these meetings or not. Our town is so special and yet people move in and shortly they need a special permit. If this board approves the special permit, our town is going to be on the way of becoming unspecial, if that's a word. Please, keep our town special. May I?
Yes.
My name is Ann Valentine and I am the daughter of Lisa Berkman and I live at this dwelling. And we came to Hatfield because it is special. We wanted to come here for the fabulous school system and we wanted to live here as a multi-generational family. And having this addition is literally a room where my mom can go so she doesn't have to listen to my son's electric guitar or my daughter who is so enmeshed in the community with the sleepovers. This is a wonderful opportunity for us to have a family where she continues to help out. I work, I need somebody to be home for my children, but there's a quiet space that she could go to. We have no intentions of ever turning this into an apartment where it would ever be rented out. My daughter's already talking about being able to have that space once my mom passes away, hopefully a very long, long future. This is just a quiet space for my mom to have. It's a wonderful community. We moved here for this, exactly. We wanted to be able to stay here, raise our children here, have our children stay here too, 20, 30, 40 years. And to do that comfortably, being able to have a space where my mom can go and just quietly shut the door, still encourage my son to play the guitar, still encourage my daughter to have her sleepovers. Our pool is almost bigger than the addition and I don't think it's going to change the flavor of our community if we literally have an addition. We're not asking for an apartment that's going to have separate utilities. It's not going to have a separate address. It literally is a space where my mom, in her pajamas, can walk out of the back deck and come in and cook us breakfast, which we are so hoping will continue each and every morning. So we want people to understand this is just a place to have a multi-generational home and continue that way and stay here for many years, as so many of you have. You've come, you've stayed. We'd like to be able to stay here and raise the children that I have in the community that we sought out, which is small, warm, comforting. That's what we're looking for. It really is an addition. It's not an apartment. There's no intentions to ever rent this out. And I know that's been something that people have been very frightened and concerned about. That's not our intention. I plan on staying here. My children plan on staying here. And I'm hoping that you can understand that that's what this is about.
Yes, sir. I'm a checkered shirt. Yeah, if everybody's done with it. Thank you.
My name's Chris Greenfield. I live at 85 Chestnut Street, the old Mullins' house. We are neighbors right here with the longest portion. Our kids play together and share that yard back and forth. I'm in complete agreement with the rural, maintaining the rural nature of our town in Hatfield. It's one of the reasons that we moved here about five or six years ago. My house was built in 1890 and it had an addition because that family needed to grow. In fact, the foundation though was built in 1800. They picked the house up and moved it somewhere else because the family needed to grow too. We're just having a new generation of this type of conversation. You know, I don't know that anybody's arguing about the multi-generational nature of how we want to live and how we want to keep this community tight and close. You know, the plan here, which is really what's in question, is something that will help support everything that we're talking about as far as this family, just specifically to this case, as far as what we want to do to maintain it. You know, if there's changes at large that the board needs to make, then that's a completely separate conversation and I would encourage we have that conversation. But for this case, you know, this extension, this addition, looks like anything we would have built over the last generations too, just to keep our families together. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Mr. Lizard.
Dave Lizard, 24 Gore Avenue.
Got to go to the phone, microphone.
I am to the immediate left of the apartment. I keep hearing addition. It's an apartment and that's the scary part. May be used by Lisa for a while for her use, but what's going to happen in the future if the property ever changes hands? You have an apartment. It's listed as an apartment. The paperwork was taken out not for an addition but for an apartment. And that's why I am opposed to it as I had a meeting with Lisa right after I obtained the paperwork from the town hall on exactly what she took out and it was listed as an apartment. Our first conversation was a bedroom, bathroom, private area for herself. And now I see it's bigger than most houses. Take out the word apartment and put an addition on. Whole different ballgame. Am I correct?
The kitchen is what makes it a dwelling unit.
Right.
If this addition did not have a kitchen, it would be an addition to a single-family home and it would still be a single-family home.
Be a single-family.
The Berkmans have the right to add on to their house, but because they want to put a kitchen in that addition, it makes it a two-family. And a two-family home, a conversion of a single-family to a two-family requires a special permit. That's why they're here.
The original home, I believe, is 42 by 28, was built by the Dyers. And this plan here is almost that size, but on a single star. The existing one has three full bathrooms, two up, one down, a family room finished in the basement for the guitar. Plus, it's a big home. And to need a apartment added on is going to change the whole character of the neighborhood. And it would open up for anybody else to apply for apartments in the neighborhood, down the street, colonial acres. The whole town could be affected by this. And I'm not just opposed to the addition, I am opposed to the apartment. As I did ask Lisa if she could change the wording, I don't think she would have any problem, even though it is quite a large space for a little quietness, but that's her choice. So I'm asking the board to please look at this carefully. We love our community. You go down the street, Gore Avenue, Bridge Street, Plantation, there's no apartments. No desire to put apartments on. This changes the character and the community as Betty Koch has explained. People come here because they like what we have and we'd like to keep it that way.
May I introduce some further information?
Yes, you may.
Knowing that the neighbors were anxious about an addition and the impact it may have, Jennifer Williams, the assessor's assistant, helped me find a website. And I have found that there are eight multifamilies that you can walk to from 24 Avenue. And they, and since I walk by them, they are clean, quiet. They blend in with the neighborhood. You would never know that they are, and they're listed as assessor's code 104, which is a legal two-family. And so as this community has grown and has increased the two-family, multi-generational way of living, it has been done so quietly and so discreetly that it hasn't, no one else has talked to me about any problems with two-family homes within walking distance.
Well, we have the -- yeah, I'll give you my copy.
We have the addresses, but I don't know where any of these places are. I mean, some of them may have been grandfathered in before, prior to zoning. Miller, okay, yeah, we granted that. That came for a special permit, but there was nobody, there was nobody there to even talk about.
Well, in terms of discreetly trying to understand how the neighborhood is working, I just went to some public records source and using the two-family code. 24 Avenue is registered as a two-family and the Garris have been renovating it, but it's still listed as a two-family.
Where is 24 Gore Avenue?
Halfway down.
24 Gore's old house.
Oh.
See Betty, how old we are?
Why don't we get back to Walling?
The lamp for crying out loud.
24 Gore's old house was a two-family before zoning came.
Before zoning ever, yeah, because that house had been there a long time. So that was not in our control and therefore didn't get public's, the public didn't have a comment on it or couldn't comment on it because --
I'm saying, it's not whether there's a public comment, it's that they exist and they exist quietly within the community values.
Mrs. Koch, again.
Some of these houses that are two-family.
Really need to get to the mic so that we get it on the video. We want the viewing public to hear you.
I haven't looked at that list, but I'd be willing to bet some of those houses that are two-families are built within the original four walls. They have not had an add-on.
That's right.
And if Rita Bezowski's house is on that list, which I don't know if she is, it's not, because that was just for Mama and it's never been for anything else.
Same thing though. This is just for Mama. Well, it's an apartment, but look at the generations. I plan on staying and my children plan to stay, just like the families.
Okay, we're talking to the board, we're not going to start arguing amongst ourselves because we won't get it. Mr. Sadowski.
Okay, let's listen up, folks. I'll get a chance to talk. My name's Stanley Sadowski, 32 on Hatfield Road. I built the house at 74 Gore Avenue back in 1966, single-family resident. I've been building commissioner here for 28 years. I retired two years ago. People used to come in and say, "Well, we want to put an addition to our house for our mother, mother-in-law or something." I was always against this stuff because I seen it in Hadley, when I go to the meetings, every other town. They put these addition on for a mother-in-law or somebody, unfortunately, they pass away, it becomes an apartment. And then the college kids come in and then we got junk cars in the yard. I used to have to go chase cars, chase everything else because I was zoning officer. As far as I'm concerned, I don't think it's a hardship for anybody in this, right here for this house, as far as putting on an addition on this house. Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments or questions? Yes, Mark.
I just wanted to stand up first. I just want to say that we do have rules in this town. We have zoning bylaws which we have to abide by. In this section of town, on this side of Route 91, most of it's zoned what's called rural residential. If you want to build on a lot in rural residential on this side of town, you can build a two-family without going to the planning board. You can buy a lot and build a two-family by right. Look in the zoning bylaw, you can do that and I'll show it to you. Now, when you convert, you have to go to the planning board and get permission. So if people and residents are worried about rules that protect us from a single-family standpoint, somebody can come in and build a two-family by right without any permit. They can just go to the building inspector and get that permit. And it's happened. You can see duplexes built in town. So I just, I don't think that's a valid argument to say that we're protected when we're, you know, if you think we're protected from the two-family properties, if that's what you feel you need protection from, we're really not. So I just wanted to mention that. That's in the bylaw.
Your second, Bernie. Mrs. Zapka was first.
I guess I have a comment and a question.
Please say your name for the record.
Jane Zapka, 34 Gore Avenue. It's kind of interesting to talk to people about that because some people say, "Oh, thank God, it's not my backyard." But I think you've got to think about if this was your backyard. 15 feet off the line, as many as six cars coming and going, 15 feet away. We have wonderful neighbors. God forbid they sell that house and somebody puts an addition that would be 15 feet off our house. We would lose our whole patio, we would lose our backyard, the whole environment would change. 15 feet. So, you know, I have to say, "Yeah, I'm not going, it's not in my backyard." But I suspect, and here's kind of a question that doesn't have a real answer, I don't think, but I'd like an opinion. Once you do this, doesn't it open the gate for similar requests in the neighborhood as a planning board member?
Well, everybody has the right to apply for it. We can't deny you the right to, you apply for a special permit and come to a public hearing. So everybody has the right to apply.
In your opinion, does it set the stage? And I know that I said it doesn't have a real answer, but I'm really looking for your expertise and your opinion.
I guess it could, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Just like, just like an over 55, that lot across from your, that potato field across from your field, what do you think about that? They have the right to apply and could put another Hatfield village there or put a solar field there.
Solar sounds good after.
So, you know, they, Bob stated it, it's in the, you know, the town, we didn't make up these rules, folks. The town voted on the rules. The town voted on the setbacks, the 15 feet, the 20 feet, the 60,000 square feet. We didn't just come up with this yesterday.
Oh, no, I understand that. I'm asking the question.
So if you're concerned about that, my suggestion is come to, come and get on the planning board or the conservation commission or write a new bylaw. If that's what, if people are worried about that we don't have enough rules and regulations so, and let the townspeople decide.
Okay, Bernie.
I just got a question for the engineer there. He said you could build a two-family house anywhere in Hatfield. Now, if you build a two-family house, do you need the same kind of frontage as a single-family house or do you need more?
The frontage, the frontage is the same, the 200 feet of frontage, but it's 60,000 square feet of area. You need more area.
That's the same as a single, right?
No.
No, the single is 40,000.
Okay.
So you'd need half again as much land area, but the frontage is still the same.
So it's not just a plain building lot and it's going to be an oversized lot?
Yeah, it's a lot and a half.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Sarah Valentine and I am Lisa Berkman's oldest daughter. And I live in California, 3,000 miles away, with my family. I've talked to my mom about this project as well as my sister and her family and it's not an apartment. It's a wing added to the house where she can --
It's an apartment. Put a kitchen in there, it's an apartment.
My mom is an avid reader and she is living in a house where we are approaching teenagerhood, dogs. She would just like a space where she can go and read and have some quiet time and maybe just throw a meatloaf in an oven so that she could have a meal by herself at some point. This is cogenerational housing. She's forced to do this because of your bylaws. Had they started this from the beginning, they could have done a two-family house from the start, but they moved into a house, they spent about two years, are it two years?
This is year three.
This is year three to see how this would work. The floor plan is not perfect for my mom. Going into the basement is not a good option for my mom. She's in her 70s, I'll leave it at that. But as we know, as we get older, living on the same, like a single-family floor plan is good. Living upstairs is not an option. She'd just like a place that she could -- She'd just like a place that she could, little corner of the house that she could call her own. I, as her oldest daughter and living 3,000 miles away, I would like this cogenerational housing to continue so that my mom can take care of my sister and her kids, and my sister and her kids can take care of my mom as she grows older. They're family people here, even if they, you have to increase the driveway for a couple of cars, they will have three cars until these kids maybe get a car when they're 16. We're not adding eight cars to the driveway, but your bylaws say as soon as you call this a two-family, and the only reason you have to call it a two-family is because she wants a stove, there isn't a change on this neighborhood. It's a lovely neighborhood, this is just a family that wants to live together and stay together, and my mom to have a little peaceful corner to herself when she needs it. That's all it's about. And I would like to go back to California as her oldest daughter and know that this can exist in this community that cherishes family. We're not talking about renting out, we're talking about just staying in the same place and just giving her a corner where she can have some peace and quiet. Thank you.
Anybody else? Comments, questions? Speak now or forever hold your peace with these folks.
Lisa, I have a question. Let's cut to the chase. Will you do it without the kitchen?
Yes.
You will. You'll put an addition on without the kitchen?
Yes.
Mr. Lizick, things are done here, right? If you're not going to put a kitchen in there, you're just putting on an addition, this meeting's over.
My preference...
That wasn't the question, the question was will you or won't you?
I think you're asking an unfair question.
I don't think so. All of these people, all these people are involved in the two-family situation, not the addition situation.
Could I offer a condition? For me, who has been a cook for a long time, that little kitchenette is kind of important. I was hoping that you would grant the two-family status with the condition that, that, I don't know how to phrase it, that if it should ever, the unit ever be rented, that it had, the main house had to be owner-occupied. And the way this is set up, it doesn't give that much privacy as an apartment. It's back, but it's designed now that I can go from the garage into the unit, there's a slider onto the common deck where the swimming pool is. It was, it's designed to be an intimate extension of a main house. And I, and the size and the value of the main house, I could never, ever think of this as being an investment property in numbers, just certainly would never work. So if I could propose that my, my permit is granted with a condition that for any rental purposes, it must always be owner-occupied.
She didn't answer Paul's question about the kitchen. I didn't hear my answer.
I thought she said yes.
She did say yes, she would do it without the kitchen, but that, you've changed that.
No, I think, I felt forced into, into kind of a verbal trap. I am hoping that you would approve this addition, this apartment, that it would legally stand as a two-family so I could have my little kitchen, but then applying conditions that it would, the main house would always be owner-occupied. And that gives, that gives accountability if anything should go sour. But that's way in the future, that, that is not for here and now. Come on, just, excuse me. I'm sorry, I apologize, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead. Do you have something more to add after that?
No, I was, I was just kind of, before I got interrupted, I was kind of listening for how you felt about a condition that required owner occupancy.
It seems to me that the neighbors aren't happy with a two-family home there, and that's, that it still would be a two-family home even with the owner occupied thing.
I'm sensing that, but as the zoning, as the zoning has been laid out, I, the property fulfills all of the requirements. I have the frontage, I have the over 60,000 square feet. The proposed addition has taken the neighbors into consideration that it is discreet, it's almost invisible other than the little side entrance by the garage. And, and for the other families on Gore who also have 200 feet of frontage and 60,000 square feet or more of land, and many, many of them do, they have the same opportunity to add to their houses, and they also have the opportunity of increased property value because of what the next generations may need. My daughter and I are experimenting with, with co-housing. It's kind of a newer idea, but I don't want to go down to one of those over 55 units and then have to get into my car and come over and make breakfast for the grandchildren because my daughter's going to work. So in terms of, I see the planning board as, as an evaluator, because I have met the conditions that allows a two-family legally. And what I'm hearing is, is concern.
And the planning board has always taken action consistent with what the neighbors feel is right for their neighborhood. I've been on the planning board going on 45 years, and we've always taken the neighbors' input because it's their neighborhood. I don't live in that neighborhood, well, you kind of do.
I kind of do.
Kind of around the corner, but it's, it's the rest of the folks in the neighborhood that, that's why there's a special permit hearing, it's to protect the neighborhood. So, and again, the planning board has always gone along with the, with the feelings of the neighbors in the neighborhood. There was a lady in the back, or in the middle.
Yeah, I'm Mary May, I live on 90 Chestnut Street. I have a question as to, if they just built an apartment and three years down the line came and said, geez, we'd like to put a kitchenette in, what happens then? I, I did house cleaning in Vermont and everybody had a little kitchenette in their basements because it was convenient to do breakfasts and stuff like that. So where do you, you know, is that a possibility and where do you start?
It would be right back here because they're converting a single-family home to a two-family home by adding a kitchen.
So even if they added the addition and then decided they would like to add a kitchen later, they still have to come back?
Because it makes it a two-family home, the kitchen.
I'm not opposed to them doing this, I know how important it is. I mean, I came back from Vermont to take care of my mother, and I, I think it's, you know, something that we need to look into in the future, it's, it's a future problem. Nursing homes are way too expensive and keeping our families with us is a very important thing.
Anybody else? Mrs. Koch, you look like you have a comment.
I'm done.
Okay.
I would like to, but I wish somebody else would get up to me.
As, as a resident of Hatfield, I went for one of these permits last year for my house, and I didn't get as much, really any opposition from the neighbors. But I, but I did talk to my neighbors and I do understand how people feel about having, what happens down the road when you move out and then it becomes a rental property, it could become an investment property. Maybe the owner doesn't even live there, he just rents it out and before you know it, you, you, the place is out of control or whatever. I think what Lisa's proposing and what other towns have is the owner occupancy requirement, so it's required that the owner live on the premises. If the owner's always living on the premises, then that, that becomes an accountability issue where that owner has to live right next to the tenant, almost with the tenant. If you require that, and the planning board can require that, and Northampton, for instance, they do require it, and they also require that when the home is sold, that, that the new owner has to go back to the city and request it, and then it gets registered on the deed again. So it's not a free lunch. The planning board could require that, and that would give the owners, because these are going to come up again, and these are going to come up all over town, I think, because it is a change of lifestyle, people want their elderly parents to be able to live with them. I've got my elderly mother living with me. So this is going to come up, and I think it, you should consider seriously how we can get this done. People complain about it's too expensive to stay in Hatfield. Well, this is a way for kids to stay in Hatfield. And if you limit the size of it to a one-bedroom, you're not going to have a ton of kids moving in from someplace else. Maybe we should have a, some conditions or we should have a new bylaw. I think eventually we've got to sort this out and make it so that people can live in Hatfield, have their families live with them, but not create a real rental hazard. So that's, that's just my comment.
We don't have that in our bylaw, owner occupied, we don't have it in the bylaw, so the, the only way we could do it would be a condition.
I would be delighted to accept that condition.
We'll see.
How is it policed though? Mark, you mentioned that when a home is sold, they make sure the buyer lives there? How, how do you police that?
Well, they have to, I mean, you can always cheat the bylaws, I mean, anyone can always not observe the bylaws, right? I mean, some people can put kitchens in their basement and not tell anybody about it. So, I mean, you have to obviously rely on the neighbors, I suppose, if the neighbors don't notice that the owner is, is on the premises. I mean, your neighbors are your biggest policer.
Just like a restrictive covenant that would require you to have a two-car garage?
It's recorded in the, it's recorded on the deed.
Well, the special permit is recorded. It wouldn't become part of the deed necessarily, the special permit is recorded at the registry of deeds, but if, if the property was sold and the owner didn't live there, there's, I mean, maybe the zoning enforcement officer hears it, but how do you unring that bell? How do you make the owner live there?
It lapses, I mean, it lapses. When it's sold, the permit lapses.
It becomes an easement, so it runs with the property, the special permit, much like an order of conditions does when there's wetlands, so it runs with the property.
Anybody else? A lot of smiling faces out there, haven't commented. You came for a reason. Okay.
Did you get any correspondence?
Any board have any?
Everything, but no, nothing that was...
What are we asking for?
Correspondence from other boards and committees, I think you're talking about.
We didn't get anything back from the other boards?
Nothing that was for or against, it was neutral.
Okay. We have to notify other boards and committees in town that this, that this application has been received and they have the opportunity to review it and comment on it. I know Conservation, DPW, Board of Health, I'm not sure who else gets it. Most of the departments.
Hey Bob, Dave Lizick wants to speak again.
David.
Changing the character of this, this town, this area is important to me, and I know to, to a lot of the abutters that I have spoken with. Making this into a full-fledged apartment is scary for me. Our property is in a trust. Our children are going to inherit it. I'm not going to be around forever. Lisa forbids, you're not going to be around forever. None of us are. You have to look at the future here and what could happen if this happens, not just here, but in Colonial Acres, Bridge Street, Gore Avenue, you name it, the whole town. The character in this town, basically, if you count up all the houses and you find out how many of them are occupied, do or with in-laws or just as apartments, it's far and few between. It's a great town. If you look at what a building lot costs now in the town of Hatfield, one of them just down the street, $163,000. That's a lot more than a lot of people used to build a house for. Why is it that high? They like what's here. Lots are at a premium in Hatfield. We don't have the space that Hadley has got, even though their building lots have gone up. So to put this here definitely is going to reduce not just our property, but the surrounding area, and that's something I think we all should look at. With that, I close my argument.
Thank you. Anybody else? Our next step is to close the public hearing, and at that point, the public comment stops unless we have a question. We can ask, the board can ask questions and, and whoever we ask the question to can, can answer it, but we discuss it amongst ourselves and then, then we decide to vote on it. So this is the last chance to ask or comment.
I need to ask those six main three. Can I ask what the total...
Go to the microphone, Eileen.
Just quick, I just want to know what the square footage is of the existing home.
The footprint of the house is 1,300 square feet. I would say that the house is probably 2,000 square feet, 2,100 square feet.
And the total number of people that are going to be living at this dwelling, is it five?
Four.
Four. Four. Thank you.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second. Any comment?
No, all in favor.
Give her closing hearing.
Aye. Mark, I got a question. The deck access, the two plans show a different deck. Is this the smaller plan, the deck access, like the existing railing, which is going to come down? Here, I'll show you what I mean. See, here there's a railing, here there's not.
There's not going to be any railing.
So this, the deck is going to get, it's going to get built to the edge of the house?
Correct.
To accommodate this new door?
Correct.
Right, okay. Well, there's the line right there.
That's the line of the old, edge of the old deck.
Okay. So that makes it more...
Connected to the...
Right.
Part of our process is the, is the criteria. And in section 5.3.7... And in section 5.3.7A, 1 through, and there's some numbers missing, 12. And it's, number one starts with the, the use required is designated in the table of use regulations as permitted by special permit. Well, that's, that's correct. We come down to, and all of them are correct with the exception of, or are positive. When we come down to, number six is the requested use will not impair the integrity or character of the district or adjoining zones and not be detrimental to the health, safety, or welfare. And I think that covers the neighborhood, the existing neighborhood. And it seems to me that the folks that live in and around this parcel feel that this will have an effect on their single-family homes. So I, I would make a motion that we find that criteria number six, 5.3.7A6, that this proposed use will impair the integrity or character of the district. And I guess I have that as a motion.
I'll second that.
It's a finding that we need to find, either in favor or not in favor of. And we have a second.
Motion's been made and seconded.
Any discussion? Once again, we've always gone with the...
With the neighbors.
The majority of the neighborhood has spoken.
Well, certainly the majority of the neighborhood has spoken. There's no question about that.
So are we in favor of that? Criteria six, that the requested use will impair the integrity or character?
Yeah, I think we can say that. I struggle a little bit with it, okay? But I do feel the people here, I'm relatively new to the board, so I haven't been in the everyday 20 years like Bob and 75 years like Betty Koch, but I do, I do kind of get the feel here of the, of the neighborhood and what's happening there. And I must say that I got to go with that feeling.
So do we have a vote on that?
Yep.
All those in favor of the criteria having an adverse effect? Aye.
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 Okay. That's voted unanimously. Therefore, I would make a motion that we deny the special permit based on our finding of criteria number six has an adverse impact on the integrity or character of the neighborhood. That's a motion. Second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor of denying the special permit based on my motion? Aye.
Aye.
The special permit is denied. There is a 20-day appeal period from the date that we file the notice of decision with the town clerk. Anyone who is aggrieved by our decision can file an appeal at the courthouse in North Hampton. I'm not sure which court, District Court, Superior Court. Thank you. Thank you for coming, folks.
Take the kitchen out. Take the kitchen out.
Take it to what you want. Okay, we have, we still have more meeting to, so please.
I heard the last of that.
Is Gene Mazik here?
Goddamn well you ain't hear the last of that, pal.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
She says he's not here, but if we wait, we can put her last on.
Okay, we'll, we'll skip over that.
Bang, 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 bang.
Okay, Jennifer Wagner? Jennifer Wagner?
Hi.
No, she's not here either. Jeremy Cotton, Peter and Teresa McLaughlin.
I'm here.
Let's wait till the room clears out.
I need to bang and 74.
They just showed up, maybe we should sign in. Al, would you like to sign in?
Mr. Cotton?
Yes, sir.
You want to come up here, it's easier to talk.
Yes, sir. So today, I'm here to the planning board to apply for a special permit to be able to split firewood at 12 Elm Street, which is a Benson properties. It's zoned industrial. I was unaware that you needed a special permit to split firewood and...
Excuse me, that mic needs to be brought over.
Okay.
Oh, okay. This one? Just needs to be turned off?
So my name is Jeremy Cotton, and my family has worked in Hatfield for 25 years at 5 West Street. I've been a resident of Hatfield for some time, although not currently right now. I'm here to apply for a special permit to be able to split firewood at 12 Elm Street, which is currently listed as the Benson properties. It's zoned as industrial, and until recently, I was not aware that we needed a permit to split.
So you didn't knowingly break the law?
No, sir.
That seems to be the current trend nowadays. But if you didn't decide to break, decide, I don't know the term, but...
Sir, as a state trooper of 20 years, I try not to break the law.
I know, I'm, I'm working on something.
Gotcha.
You know who I'm talking about.
Is this a storage unit being used?
There's a piece of property behind the storage unit that I rent.
Yeah, I drove through there. It's kind of in the back of the property. There's a garage, isn't there a wood frame garage there or something?
That belongs to the Benson.
Okay, it's adjacent to one of the other buildings, but, and adjacent to the, the metal building storage unit.
So it's part of the storage, but it's not in the storage areas at all?
So...
Is this wood processed, lumber mill or wood processing?
Yeah, I would say that would...
Agricultural use?
No, it's silver culture, agricultural.
I'm trying to see what, under what, what table, what's, what's the use here?
Well, it's industrial, zoned, and I can never find it in here.
From what I read from the, the bylaws, the sawmill was the manufacturing of lumber and building products, which this is not.
Anyway, it's, it's processing of lumber and wood? Is that what, how it's, why can't I find it?
Well, lumber, well, under agricultural use, it's got lumber mill or wood processing. It's 3.5.
Yeah.
3.0, but I, it's allowed in...
It's, it's only allowed in industrial zone with a special permit.
But I don't...
That's the only, that's the only place it comes up, is, is under the ag uses. So you're not, you're not milling lumber, you're just processing firewood?
Yes, sir.
Taking big logs?
Just take a, a truckload of full-size logs, bring them in, cut them up?
Yes, sir.
Do you have a, do you have one of those machines that...
Very, it's a very small machine that cuts it and splits it and pushes it into a pile.
Processing warehouse agricultural.
I think it falls under that, under that ag use. It's under ag uses, but it's not allowed only in industrial. So yes, it requires a special permit. Talking with the building inspector, didn't he also say something about your trucks and things? Because you're in the business of cutting trees.
Correct. So at Benson's, I rent two bays to park some equipment that needs to be out of the weather. They have these huge bays inside there.
Yeah.
Which I, I have my tools there. If I need to change the oil in my truck, I'll change the oil. And basically, it's to store, you know, my ropes and saddles and so on and so forth. And out back, I've rented a small half acre of land, if you will, just to be able to basically store firewood. And park trucks if they're not inside the garage.
Okay, so I guess we could say you're a contractor too, because aren't you up contracting?
For tree work, yes.
Yeah, for tree work.
Yep.
So it's also in your contractor's yard. And which requires a special permit with site plan review, so you might as well kill two birds with one stone.
Okay.
And, and apply, I would say apply for them both.
Okay.
Do you have a copy of the bylaw? What do you, what do you have? The application?
I just have a application for the information. And this is just for the firewood.
Okay, well, I think you should apply for the contractor's yard as well.
Okay.
Because you want to be able to park your trucks there and...
Sure.
Keep your equipment and that sort of thing there as well.
Where's that? The contractors?
Is there other contractors working in that area? There's a note here that says that our building inspector said that he's heard some of the units are being used as de facto garage bays to run auto repair and metal fabricating.
Okay, not to my knowledge.
No.
No. There's, there's a gentleman there that has a hobby of working on his own stuff. It's what he does, what...
He's tinkering with his own stuff.
I've never seen cars go in and out of there for payment of money, ever, in my life. Been there for four months.
How long you been there?
Four months, sir. I was working out of my father's place on 5 West Street, and just because of the congestion, there's just too much.
Trying to find the section of the bylaw.
David, David Cotton?
Uh, David's my uncle, John Cotton's my father.
Okay.
Yeah.
David's in the tree cutting business.
In North Hampton.
Yeah.
I think Cotton's, Cotton's a wood in their blood, don't you?
Third generation.
You should apply, again, apply under that. We're going to need a site plan though.
Okay.
Because we need something to stamp and approve.
Okay.
If we approve it.
Okay.
We can, we can condition it as far as, you know, where things are on the site plan. The special permit can be conditioned as well, hours of operation and, or number of trucks and that sort of thing. So just, just so you're aware of that.
Put up a sign out there?
No. My, my home office is in South Hadley. This is basically just a satellite area to, to park my vehicles. And store firewood.
We have to advertise twice in a two-week period. It takes us about a month to get, get all the ducks in a row so that we can have a public hearing here.
Okay.
Next meeting's September 14th. So you really got two months.
Okay.
Because we don't meet in August.
Plenty of time to get everything in, in order.
The zoning bylaws outline what the requirements are. we can waive some of the requirements, and some of them are like drainage calculations and things. We don't need that. We really need just to see what the operation looks like and where the trucks are going to be parked and where the, the machine that splits the firewood is, is going to be and where the...
Does it matter if nothing is, basically, it's, it's on a small trailer. Nothing's, nothing's built, it's, nothing is static. I mean, I can put it together and put it on my pickup truck in 10 minutes and move it. So there's nothing, you know, it's, it's basically, it's a little bit bigger than a, you know, a regular wood splitter. So there's nothing permanent, there's no buildings.
Right. But we, we need to get an idea where the operation is going to take place.
Okay.
Because it's a pretty good-sized lot there.
Right.
You know, that it's not going to be here one day and there the next.
I see.
Over here another day, that this is your area of operation. And, I mean, everything has wheels. The trucks have wheels.
Right.
The machine probably has wheels. But if you designate your truck parking area and your, and your wood splitting area or processing area and your, and your piling area, then that gives us something to approve.
Okay.
Again, the trucks aren't going to be there all day, every day, they're going to leave, but they should go back in the general area.
Okay.
So that it's not helter-skelter all, all over the place.
Understood.
If you understand what I'm trying to say.
This document is online.
I, I found it, yeah.
Is this the portion of that piece where Bill Corza used to have his operation?
From what I...
Or where Underground Supply was?
Yes.
Underground Supply?
Corza, I believe, was, Corza and Underground.
But I thought they were behind the Hatfield barn though, weren't they? I know Underground Supply was...
No, they were, they were in that.
I think they started out there and, and moved over behind, on the next parcel.
I think Corza's basically where I was in Underground Supply and might have been on the other side.
Was in the building.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I know where you're at.
So you, you need to get a, or download a copy of the, of the bylaw and read the special permit and special permit with site plan approved requirements. We can, again, we can waive some of the requirements. We need to do that in writing so that there's a, there's a record of what was waived so that we don't get an incomplete application and...
When, when would I have the opportunity to pick that up so, to make sure that my application is what you're requiring?
Well, if you want to sit down, we can go through the requirements now.
Sure.
like item number five is existing and proposed topography, a two-foot contour interval, the location of wetland streams, water bodies, drainage wells, areas subject to flooding and base flood elevations. I don't think we, you're not anywhere near, I know there's river way out in the back, but you're not anywhere near that, are you?
No, I'm about 100 feet away.
Okay, so number five, we can waive.
It's probably important if you're within 100 feet to show it.
Okay.
I mean, if somebody's going to do the site plan, they'd probably know to, to show, you know...
Yeah, then that...
A resource area.
That shows us that you're out of the, out of the buffer zone.
Or you would have to stay out of that buffer zone.
Do you have any services there, any water sewer?
No, no.
Okay. So item number eight is the location description of all proposed septic... So item number eight is the location description of all proposed septic systems, percolation tests when necessary, water supply, storm drainage systems, including existing proposed drain lines, coverage drainage wells, catch basins, utilities, hydrants, manholes, and lighting fixtures. So number eight could be waived as well. I better write this down soon. So we're waiving five.
Well, except for the river bylaw.
Right, okay.
Okay, you gotta, you gotta put the stream in there, I guess.
The wetlands, you need to locate that on the plan. And we'll clarify that in the letters, that we need to know that your, your area is
Outside the buffer.
Outside the buffer zone, 100-foot buffer zone. Number nine is drainage calculations and sub drainage along with soil logs. I don't, I don't believe we need that. Oh, that was nine.
Oh, that's nine.
Yeah.
About a restroom out there?
We have access
Is there one on site?
There is, in the Benson area.
Okay.
About trash, disposal of any trash?
There's a dumpster on site that we have access to.
Okay.
Okay. Show us that then as well. That's, that's number 10. We're gonna leave that in. Number 12, you say you're not gonna have any signs. I don't think we need to know about signs.
Yeah, because if they did, they'd have to have the restrictions of the height and the nomination and all that kind of stuff.
There's no signs.
And number 13 is alterations to any existing or new business, commercial or industrial, uses a table containing the following information. Max area of buildings. If there is buildings that you have access to, you need to show us that on, on the site plan as well.
And those would be just the two storage units that I rent.
Okay. So number 13 would be waived and number 15, which is clearing stockpile removal of topsoil, you're not gonna do any of that?
No.
Okay. So we'll get you a letter in the next week or so.
Okay.
That indicates that we're waiving those requirements of the submission. The special permit applications required, special permit application contents. We're gonna waive that from the contents.
Okay.
Because it's really not applicable.
Okay.
And then the sooner you get that information in, our next meeting is September 14th. So you gotta get it in.
Says September 7th. Where am I missing here?
I thought it said September 14th.
I've changed to the 14th because of the holiday.
Oh, okay, alright.
We needed, what, a couple, at least three weeks?
Yeah, I need four weeks.
She needs four weeks to get it, because we have to get it in the Gazette.
Okay.
And you can't just call them in, because we have to publish a, a public notice, that, you know, the little things you see in the paper, a public notice.
Okay.
To, to inform. You'll also have to notify the abutters, say if they go to the, part of the assessors thing there. It's, yeah, part of the application is the assessors.
The town clerk will give you guidance of what you need to do.
Okay.
Just make sure I have more than 30 days to get things ready, 30 days of notice.
So that gives, yeah, that, I mean, you don't, it sounds like September is a long ways away, but it isn't.
Happens quick.
Yeah, it's two months, but it's gonna take you that long to, one month. You really only have one month. It's gonna take you probably the better part of that to put the information together.
Okay.
All set?
Thank you very much.
Okay, well, if you have questions.
Town clerk's office.
Oh, yeah, I see the town clerk or if it's, or call Wilma.
Yeah, I sent you an email.
That's right, okay.
Yeah.
Call Wilma and she'll call me. And if it's something that she can't answer, then, and I have to answer that.
Great. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Tim Pachark, informal meeting.
Good evening. I'm Attorney Al Alvene. I'm here with Tim Pachark. And we're just looking for some guidance at this point. Tim purchased a building from the Cigar Corporation on Little Naposet Road. And at one point, not that long ago, the Cigar Corporation owned the big building, 80,000 square feet that Tim purchased, and a home out in front with a couple of barns on it. And I believe the planning board signed off on an A&R plan that cut off the house from the, the back building. And Tim's bought the building to develop it. And now there is concern about whether Little Naposet is a private road or whether it is a public road. And so, you know, we, we have some interest, but Tim hasn't really embarked on a full-scale marketing plan to try to, you know, lure tenants in there. He wants to know basically if this, my guess is it's this indecision on the part of the town as to whether or not it's a public or a private road is going to bear at all on any application he submits, you know, to the town for a special permit.
Yes, at the time, when we signed the A&R on the house, I think Zemansky had some document from the state saying
There was
they pay us Chapter 90 money for Little Naposet Road. And then there's a question. So I don't know if the attorneys, the town attorney has they haven't given us any decision as to what he's found.
I know that the town attorney was brought in somehow, but I haven't seen any ruling by him either.
Yeah, I've seen that before where a town claims it's a public way because they get Chapter 90 monies for it. But I don't think in any case has that upheld as being, accepting it as a public way.
Oh, I've seen it. I have. Alan Coombs did it lots of times. You know Alan Coombs well, right? That, that stuff was on a three-by-five card record over in the State Building on Route 5 and 10. And if that money was taken, and it was supposed to be allotted to those roads, and it wasn't allotted to those roads, they still are a road. They're still, that money was supposed to go there. And even though it didn't go there, okay, it's recorded that those roads were roads in the town of Hatfield. So it's a touchy subject on that Little Naposet Road.
Well, and, I mean, from my perspective, I don't much care whether it's public or private.
Yeah, right.
I mean, he's got this albatross over there.
Yeah.
That, you know, he's, you know, making payments on every month and, and, you know, he needs to be able to move forward. He's had it now for just over a year. And, you know, he's, he's had some inquiries. But, I mean, it's a beautiful building and, you know, it can certainly serve as an asset to the community. But, you know, he's got to be able to appear in front of you folks and get, you know, special permits to do most anything that he's been doing. It's all industrial zone.
Yeah, but doesn't he have to go get, get us, get that road one way or the other to find out what the hell's going on with that before we can talk about a special permit?
I don't think it's incumbent upon him to ascertain that, because
No, I'm just saying, somebody, somewhere has got to say yes or no on that road.
Well, I guess part of the question is this. One would be, could you issue a special, special permit if it's only a private road? Okay? And then if you say, well, if it's a private road, we can't issue a special permit, well then, we need to ascertain that it's a, a public road. But then, if we can't ascertain that it's a public road, or better yet, worse yet, they conclude it's not a public road, then how do we deal with the fact that, that this property was created by the signing of an A&R plan?
It's created based upon the document that was presented to us by the petitioner, the owner of 65 Elm Street. Showed us a document I was just, I was just looking for, which stated, this is a town road. It has been accepted as a town road by the town. And they, they gave this list to the state. And over at the State Building over there, they have, they have this road. They have a lot of other roads in Hatfield that are, some of them are in fact the dirt road, but they say they're a town road. So that was, that was the basis for our decision.
I think we need to hear from
Our attorney.
Our attorney.
Town attorney.
The problem is, he's in Worcester and we're here. I don't know if they pay him travel.
Well, but, but he's been, he's been chased down, I mean, he got involved in this thing eight months ago.
Yeah, right, right.
Terry had a comment.
And they did have the street sign removed on the request that town council has done his research. And that we are the owners of three-quarters of the road. Stanley Zemansky is the owner of the front section of the road. It's a private way and it is not Little Naposet. His address now is 65D Elm Street. It's not Little Naposet.
Well, he's, if he's, if the town attorney has come to that conclusion, he's kept a secret from us.
Selectmen voted on it, so they are aware.
Well, they don't, they didn't tell us anything about it.
Well, and I can't imagine they would do something like that to a landowner without giving the landowner notice. Because I can tell you that
They didn't say anything to me about the meeting. And from what I understand is the attorney only made his opinion. It wasn't fact.
Oh.
And he was only, he only made his opinion based on information given to him by the Klepakis.
Attorney.
How, how does the residents at whatever the 65 Elm Street, how do they access the property? Are they, do they cross your property, cross the Klepakki property?
Right. Little section is owned by that property owner. The little house buster owns the house. So he owns that little front section and then we own over to the top of the hill.
Are their driveways our property?
Part of it's on ours, yeah.
So he's, so he's trespassing, or the tenants are
No, we've always given a gratuitous access as long as it's not an overburdening access.
I can tell you
Then he's already rid the road up.
The Klepakis do not own that road.
If you have hard evidence
I can show you right now if you like. If you have a few minutes, I can show you right on the server.
If it's gonna benefit your client and, because our attorney isn't giving us information, and you have something that says it's a town road, then
No, I can't tell you it's a town road. I don't have that. I can tell you the Klepakis don't own the road, and I can show you that.
We have it too, so, so we can get our lawyer here too if we want and have another contest, or we can all go to court.
Seems to me maybe that Land Court is the next step.
Exactly.
Well, I can tell you that I just went through this in Amherst, where there was a, a very big project going in a university building. And abutters were claiming that the, the people who were about to build this educational structure were, were taking their land, they were using their land, the boundaries weren't right and so on. And the planning board there took the position that, you know, we don't determine boundary lines at this board.
Exactly.
You know, you tell us that you own the property, you meet the criteria within those bounds, we give the permit or not. If you don't own the property and you want to build on it and then somebody shuts you down later on, that's your problem. And I would suggest that's the Klepakis' problem as well. But we've had a half dozen lawyers review this. We've got title insurance over the road. It is absolutely not owned by the Klepakis. And like I said, if you want, I can show you on a survey. Mr. Sassy's a surveyor. You know, he would understand this plain as day. It is that obvious that they don't own the road.
I, I guess we'd like to see it.
Like to see it, hell yeah.
This here is a blow-up of this survey that is recorded in Plan Book 120, page 16. And I want to show you
And this Anna M. Ryan is the Klepakki property?
Predecessor, yes, that's their predecessor. And here's another survey. Now, what I can do is, I can read the Klepakki description. I can read the Klepakki description for you. And it will start here. The description reads that it goes from here to the westerly side of Little Naposet Road. And then it follows along the, the westerly side of Little Naposet Road down here to this point.
Here?
Yes.
I'm sorry, where's Elm Street?
It on my glasses. Can you see Elm up here?
Yeah.
Oh, to this point, right here.
Well, that point, okay.
And I'm sorry, Ron, could you read the, the bearing and the distance? Because the bearing and the distance there is the exact same thing as the bearing and the distance here. 38.97.
1830, 331830.
The distance is the same.
38.97. Okay, alright. And then their, their description brings them all the way up to this point here and then back to here. So I can read the description on their deed, if you'd like, and you'll track it right there.
So the deed calls for the road?
Yes, absolutely.
And how do they
With all fee interest.
Pardon?
With all fee interest in it. Together with all fee interest.
It said Meadow Road.
The problem with that is that all of this land was owned by the First National Bank of Northampton. And, and the First National Bank of Northampton conveyed our part prior to this part. And by virtue of the conveyance and the derelict fee statute, which I'm sure Ron knows, conveys us halfway to the middle of the road.
That's Buster's property.
And at the, at the time of the conveyance to Anna Ryan or her predecessors, they had no interest to convey to the owner of this property. So the Klepakis own nothing in that road, although they do have, notwithstanding the fact that the deed says any fee interest, they had no fee interest to convey. They do have the rights of passage.
This section he's speaking of went with this lot here, which is Buster's. That, that did not go with the warehouse. That went with Buster's private.
This may be a private road and not a, not a, not a town road.
Again, I make no, no statements about whether it's private or, or a public road.
This portion of that one is encumbered.
This, this was all part of the same piece, Ron. This line was just created. So this was all part of the tobacco property. Then they
And it got split. That piece went with that, not with that.
This, this is a division of land in, in 2014?
Mm-hmm. That's the one you guys approved.
Well, we gotta go with senior rights, what's, what's older. This one's from 1948?
That's, that's, that's this property over here.
Where's, where's the original?
That's this property over here.
And this, this is This plan?
1924.
Now, you have that plan?
I had it right out here for you.
Somebody took it. I think Paul's got it, yeah.
Yeah, that, this is a blow-up of that.
So what date's that?
This is 1982, March 9, 1982.
The conveyance from the First National Bank of Northampton was back in 1936.
Right here when it got separated out.
They own all of it.
And the deed follows right up to today.
Yeah, and the, and the descriptions are the same for the whole period of time.
Okay.
So this little
That's the one you guys approved. That goes with the front lot. That was split up.
That little pie is
Is right here.
Represents them.
Okay.
I see.
But that has nothing to do with it, because
It does, because that's how it got split.
Well
It says it right there. That's how it got split. It stays at that front lot.
Wait, but that doesn't deny us access over it after we've had it for 80 years.
But you're saying the property line follows this broken line, which is the edge of
Yeah, the, the deed description calls it the westerly sideline.
With all fee interest.
Where's our plan? I mean, I should say, where's the plan that
So this, this layout This Little Deposit Road belongs to this property?
No.
I missed it. See, Corey, Corey was still on the board, Silas.
No, because our, our boundary line is our boundary line is the eastern side of Little Naposet Road. So Little Naposet Road is not deeded to these people and is not deeded to those people. But all the deeds say something akin to, "Together with my right title and interest in it, you said Meadow Road." Now, again, even if Mrs. Klepakki is correct that she got something by virtue of those words of conveyance, at that time, because under the derelict fee statute, if an owner of property sells property and retains ownership of property across the street, okay, whether it's a public or a private road, he conveys to the middle of the street, the fee statute. And so when they convey And so when they conveyed back in thirty-six to the.
Called Bureau of Tobacco, Eminem, or whatever it was.
Eminem, it was Eminem. When they conveyed to them, they conveyed to the middle of the street. Now, when First National Bank, a few years later, conveys to Anna Ryan's predecessors, okay? They make a clear description, because this description hasn't changed, they describe it as the westerly side of Little Napontet Road. Now, at that time, they did not own property across the street. So these people would not have gotten to the middle of the road, okay? So their boundary line is clearly defined as the westerly side of the street, but they were given rights of passage, which they would have had even without those words of grant, you know, in the deed. But there were, there were no rights to convey at that point in time.
So who owns this?
That we don't know.
At that point in time, they thought the town had the ability.
We've been paying taxes on it for twenty-five years. It's, but we've been taxed on it for twenty-five years.
But if your deed says that you own.
Only to the western side.
How do you pay taxes on it?
But because it's, because that's what we've been paying taxes on for twenty-five years. And because it said that we have all rights and fee interest in that road, that's how it's always been. For twenty-five years, we've been paying taxes on that road. Except for that little tiny section which went with the house. And when this was split back two years ago and you guys approved the splitting of that, that little triangle went with the house, not with the back lot.
I mean, I think Mrs. Klepakki thinks that that means something that doesn't. Because again, yes, it went with the house, but it was part of the larger parcel. And so it's, you, you don't, you can't block off access to this piece by conveying it away.
We're not asking to block anything off, we're, we're asking not to be burdened by the excessive traffic that is being done.
It's a good thing you worked there, twenty-five years ago, because there was.
There has not been anything for twenty-five years.
I know that.
It was well, well before that, it was back in the sixties when it was.
You might say.
So for the twenty-five years we've been there, there's been two vehicles per day. Now we're up to almost ten.
That is not true.
At times.
Okay, we're not gonna argue about it.
We're trying to figure out, figure this out here.
I, I think there's.
I think my attorney should be able to speak also.
Okay, yeah, we're not making any decisions.
The legal decision here.
I didn't even know what this meeting was, it says informal meeting, so therefore, he's speaking informally, we're not making any decisions. If I, if I had known what it was about, maybe we would have.
If I had to, I would have.
Yeah, we would have said bring your guy.
Because we've already done tons of.
I, I don't know if this is the place for attorneys to argue.
Correct, I don't think so.
Who owns what or who belongs to what.
I can tell you we disagree, okay? But I can also tell you that knowing, Mr. Klepakki expressed his disapproval of, of my client's purchase of this property from the very beginning. But my client wanted to develop the parcel. And so we tried to make sure that we dotted the i's and we crossed the t's. And so I went to the title insurance company right from the beginning, I said, look, we anticipate some problems. I said, so I wanna make sure that, you know, that, that we're gonna have access to this property, okay? And so the title insurance company hired three lawyers, including their Boston counsel, okay? And I, I have letters from them, and they've, they've issued a substantial insurance policy on this property, feeling comfortable that we have the access that I just.
So you advised your client before he bought it?
Yes.
He didn't just go out and buy the property?
No, no, no.
And then call you in later and say, what are we gonna do here?
This was very, very carefully reviewed, scrutinized. I mean, I examined all the properties around here, going back to the mid eighteen seventies.
I just went back to eighteen seventy.
Well, I, I guess we need to hear from our attorney.
I think he needs.
Somebody's gotta say what that road is, I mean, everybody's got a different.
This sounds.
Your attorney has, has never reached out to us, okay? I know that, I don't know how the other, the, the town attorney got involved, but somebody reached out to him. And then I believe that attorney Melnick, who represents the Klepakis, was given an opportunity to give him some information. And then they reached out to Buster Semansky's attorney. And nobody reached out to my client. And I, you know, my client said, should we do something, should we do something? I said, okay, nobody's calling upon us, we know our position. And until they call upon us, there's no reason, reason for us to speak up.
Okay, if you give me your card, I have to go through the town administrator. I can't call the attorney direct. I will see her tomorrow and ask her to ask the town attorney to get in touch with you. And between the three or four of you, maybe we can work this out.
And my attorney.
Or figure, yeah, that's what I mean, yeah. Between all, between the attorneys.
I'd have a hard time believing that they wouldn't have access to this after it being on, on, on all these old plans as Meadow Road.
We're not saying they don't have access to it. He's, he's, he's able to access the building, he's not being stopped to. He's, we're asking him not to overburden it.
Oh, that's. That's subjective.
They're taking the position that they control the rights to the road. And our position is that they absolutely not controlling rights. In fact, of the three people, Semansky, us, and Klepakki, we think that they have the, the weakest rights to the road.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get in touch with.
It's interesting, you know, that's what case laws will, you know, it sets a precedence. And then there's probably been a precedent set that they'll cite in this case, where some access was given or granted or.
It's not in their deeds.
No, but it's, it's prescribed.
The only access in their deed is that little corner.
It's more than twenty years, it's prescribed.
But I'm just saying, the only thing in their deeds, except for what he put in it when they split the land, is that little corner, that is it.
It'll be, it'll be educational. We'll learn something from it.
Hey, I will, I will get in touch with the town administrator and ask her to get in touch with the town attorney so that you can share information with him. And I'm sure he'll be in touch with your attorney. And all the attorneys can get together and.
Have a pardon?
Duke it out.
Hopefully settle.
Or work it out, I mean, work it out.
Loop it out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Boy, that's a mess, that is a mess.
Robert Fanna, fifteen Elm Street. Not here?
Hey, nobody showed, we threw a party and half the people didn't come.
Paul Miller, ninety Chestnut Street, he's not here either. Well, we're back up to Jennifer Wagner. No, oh, so, how about Gene Mazick?
I moved, we're in Jersey, oh, here comes.
She sounded worried about probating my dad's will, but she thought she was gonna be back in the first bus. Since she's young. So this is the HOA and the agreement for the open space. To insert it as open space wilderness. And there were a couple amendments to the original plan that was proposed. But everything was in accordance with your guidance in the last several meetings, as well as the bylaw.
This is quality paper.
It is.
It's like card stock.
Stables.
I think we have to have an attorney look at this, I mean, somebody's always told me if an attorney writes it, an attorney better look at it.
Yeah.
So pretty much what the whole thing was, based on your recommendations from the last meeting, was that the town doesn't assume any expense associated with this. And that was the whole purpose and intention of the homeowners association, is that it'll collect fee from the people, you know, from myself, my mother, who lived in this.
You mean taxing?
No, a homeowner's.
Okay, okay, alright, okay.
To maintain, to maintain the public way, or the, the dirt way, to maintain plowing, anything that's associated with clearing it, keeping it clear of debris. The fire marshal had already signed off, I don't know if that was something you guys already received, that the fire marshal had signed off.
Yeah, he talked us about that, or he sent us a letter about it or something.
Okay, so I didn't know if you got the letter, but just costs associated with keeping it in accordance with the needs to accommodate the land.
Okay.
Now, this is your mother's home right here, right?
Yes, so this boundary was adjusted before it cut off the driveway.
Right.
So they readjusted it, which is something that you guys had pointed out previously. And then this was readjusted because the attorney said that the type, this parcel was what my father had bought from the town.
Right.
On tax liens.
Right.
And so because the title's not clean yet, because we're probating that through Land Court, we just cut it off so that way it won't cause any issues for whoever provides the house. So I don't know what else you guys need, I think that was pretty much everything I was instructed of. And then until, you know, we're not looking to blow this up into a big land development or housing development. So, you know, my mom wants a downsized, this was the parcel she wanted, which was the closest to the bone. And then everything else was staying forestry until, you know, me and my fiance decided to leave the nest and.
I know a guy that cuts trees.
I'm sitting here waiting to talk to you.
Well, there's nothing good on TV tonight, you're talking.
Must not be.
Well, we'll take this under advisement.
And then there was a solo thing copy, which is what I was told.
Mylar copy.
Mylar, yeah.
Yeah, do you guys need that now or do you want?
Well, why don't you?
I would hold on to it.
It won't get lost, right, Wilma?
You hold on to it.
Okay.
You're gonna have her go, okay.
You hold on to it, then.
What did you call it?
There.
It's a Mylar.
Mylar, yes.
I forgot, it was a plastic one.
The plastic one, there we're gonna go, the plastic one from now on, do you bring the plastic one with you?
We'll take it under advisement, I guess I better get this to the town attorney to review. And then we're meeting again on.
So nothing can be done before?
Don't you want this, we got enough?
We're not meeting in August, we don't, traditionally, we don't meet in August, it's too hot.
Hallelujah.
We're meeting again on September fourteen.
I heard you take.
So we'll put you on the agenda for, for September fourteen then. And I hope we have an answer from the town attorney by then, that he doesn't take August off.
Alright, that's what we're hoping to, because we'd like to start building a smaller house.
I can't believe you're in a rush for this, how long's it been?
A couple of years.
Do you remember Bill was in here and he was like throwing his hands up, well, that's it, that's over.
He's moving to Georgia.
You know, Bob Barley couldn't get ahold of him for six years or something. William.
It'd be nice to get it taken care of.
Well, we'll get it taken care of, thank, thank you very much, thank you.
Stay at your mom.
I will, thank you.
Oh, we have August time off, we're gonna, we, I guess we've kinda decided by default we're not meeting in August.
We're not gonna meet until September.
And then the housing plan.
Yes, this has to do with this documentation that was given. And the selectmen would like very much to get together with the planning board. They will be, they will be meeting on July twenty-sixth, if you fellas would like to get this over with.
This, this was, was prepared for us on the community preservation, right? To show.
I don't know what it is.
The, the amount of affordable housing?
Yeah, right.
And these questions right here are what they are hoping that you folks can address, decide upon what you consider to be the important areas.
So it starts, starts here, chapter one.
We all got a copy of that, right? Everybody's got a copy of that.
We should have copies, it is page two.
I think I, the dog ate mine.
The dog ate your homework.
I read it when I can't fall asleep.
After Jay Leno.
After about two seconds.
So we, we need to, we need to give them input, they're looking for input from us.
And you need to meet with them, if you want to get together with them on the twenty-sixth, we can get you on the agenda.
What time is their meeting?
I would have to check, I don't know.
When do they usually have their meeting?
We need to meet again to discuss.
They, they meet sometimes at five-thirty and sometimes at six-thirty.
What the questions are.
But we would need for you folks to get together, review these questions, and decide upon the action that you would recommend. And either get together in July or wait until September, they would love to get it over with.
So we would have to meet again next week? In order to get something together for their.
July twenty-sixth.
Do they want something in writing from us, or?
I don't think it would be bad to have it in writing.
And, and then give a verbal presentation as well? I mean, I kinda glanced at it, Paul, you worked on it, you know all about it.
I put in all kinds of time on it. And if they, it's how many bites does it take to eat an elephant? They're gonna have to get that thing fine tuned down. You can't just go in there and take that whole thing and say, we're gonna do it in five years. We don't have the staff, we don't have the money, we don't have the ability, we don't have any of it. So it's gonna have to be broken down into what we think is probably the top five things for the next foreseeable future, year, year and a half, and see if we can't sell that to the selectmen. But the state wants it all, and they're, they can't get it, you know, it can't, can't be done.
And then there's the time element there.
Right, there's the time element.
You start, the clock starts ticking down.
Well, what's your pleasure, gentlemen, get together next week or, we'd, we'd still have to meet in August in order to?
No.
Yeah, I don't know what to do there.
If we, if we meet next week and then we're gonna, we're gonna need, and then meet with them on the, what is it, July twenty-sixth?
Twenty-sixth.
I have one more permit, special permit, are we gonna apply for?
Oh. Well, you're not on the agenda.
Not on the agenda, sir.
It was twelve Elm Street.
Oh, 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 okay. Come on up.
What is it, what is it?
You were all grouped together because it was the same address.
Yeah, that's why.
I would like to apply for a special permit on twelve Elm Street. It's in subsection five point three, it's first of all metal shop. I own a small steel erection company, ninety-nine point nine percent of my work's done.
Are you the guy he was talking about that somebody?
Well, the email, the email from Kyle mentioned that there were other, other businesses being conducted.
Well, I'm not doing business out of there, what I do is strictly field work. But I wanna be within all the codes and laws. I think it'd be a good resource for people in town, also, if I can do a little bit of business out of there, that's fine. Most of, most of, everything I do.
It's the same place?
I'm a steel rector, so I go wherever the work is. What I'd be doing in there is basically making clips, fixing things, maintaining my equipment, something like that. It's nothing high volume, although the subsection that it's under is metal manufacturing, it's not gonna be anything high volume coming in and out of there. It's mostly just, like I said, maintaining things, sometimes I'll build myself, so certain things.
Manufacture or processing of metal product.
A prelude to doing stuff in the field, like cutting.
Correct.
And piecing it together, so that you can bring it out to the field and erect it.
Well, no, I see, what I, what I do in the field, I don't even fabricate anything, strictly selling labor and steel erection. But what I do do now and then is, you know, if the customer comes to me and says, hey, I need two clips made and, you know, a piece of hang line, okay, no problem, you know, I can go in there, cut it up with a saw, log it together for him. Basically, like I said, all my money's made in the field.
Okay, well, you've got the right section, five point three of the table of use. And in an industrial zone, it requires a special permit with a site plan review. So again, the same thing that Mr. Cotton has to do, you're gonna show us the plan, where the buildings are, or, or your shop is gonna be, and how the traffic's gonna come and go. And it's one hearing, but we, we vote on it twice, once to approve the site plan and another to approve or deny the use.
Do you want me to send the letters out to everybody, same as, do I need anything that's getting waived? Or do you want me to go through the whole thing? It's up to you.
Well, I guess we can use the same waivers that we gave Mr. Cotton. Those design criteria are for like a new industrial building that's gonna go, so we, we would need to know where the, where the roof's gonna drain, where the parking lot's gonna drain. But that's all exist. drain, but that's all existing there.
Yes.
And it's worked for the last hundred years the way it is, so we don't need all that information. I'll give you a letter with those same...we'll waive those same requirements, I mean, as long as...
Yeah, it's fine with me.
I'm not taking action on my own here, as long as everybody's in agreement with that.
He's not, like you said, he's not taking a new piece of property and building a shop and...
So, pretty similar to what Corza was doing in there, it was basically what I...
Okay. So, again, I'll give you a letter waiving those requirements.
Okay.
Submit the rest of it.
Okay.
With a plan to scale and the application. You've got to notify your butters, so they'll get another letter from you.
That's one question. If we apply for two special permits, that has to be two separate letters, right?
Two separate hearings, yeah.
Yeah.
Because you're not related to each other.
No, I understand.
He's one business, you're another business, so it's two hearings.
All right, I got you.
Have we okayed a special permit there before? They keep mentioning Bill Corza. Was he granted a special permit?
I don't think he ever had a special permit there.
No, he was just operating out of there.
Just flew by the seat of his pants.
You may have with Donna's lumber back in the day.
No, that was before.
Donna, that was a whole different ballgame.
That was before all that. We did for the storage units. That was, I think that was...it might have just been site plan review for the mini warehouse storage units. But anybody else that operated out of it was kind of below the radar, and the lumber company was before zoning. Okay, thank you. I didn't mean to overlook you.
Well, I don't know if we have any addresses for either of you fellows to write those letters to. I might have it on here, but is that the address I want?
You could send it to P.O. Box 550 in Hatfield, if you'd like, both of them.
P.O. Box 550?
Five-five-zero, Hatfield House.
Very good.
Well, that's why you were hanging around. I thought you just wanted to see your government in action here.
Hope you do well with your potatoes, Swazi. I hope you do okay with your potatoes.
Well, try.
All right. Couple of weeks, you're going to be digging, you'll be working day and night.
I got a question about...so, they don't own the property, but they can...they still have to apply for a permit, right?
Yep.
The property owner can allow them to...
There's a signature box. There's a signature box...
By the owner says, "Okay, I..."
For the owner.
Okay.
I mean, that happens if somebody's buying a piece of property and they want to get their approvals before they buy it, the owner signs off on it.
So we're kind of create...or what's being created is like an incubator businesses that are...
Sort of, yeah. It's a pretty good-sized piece of property, so there's...yeah, there'd be two, and then there's the rental units, so there's really three businesses, as far as I know, out of there. Once again, we can put conditions there that...
Yeah, no, I know, because they can't have them going in there all hours of the night and chopping wood at midnight.
Or the number of trucks or welding and all that sort of stuff.
Cutting and grinding at midnight or whatever, Sundays or whatever.
So, are we going to meet next week to discuss this housing plan?
Can it wait?
I'd rather do it sooner than later.
What's the date you mentioned about...
Like, let's do it next Wednesday and then meet with them.
So they meet on the twenty-sixth.
Who's day?
Then waiting till September.
What kind of a day is the twenty-sixth, Wilma?
Board of Selectmen.
Oh, Board of Selectmen.
So if you guys met on the...
Probably a Monday? I don't know. No, two weeks from yesterday, Tuesday.
Had a work meeting, get this resolved, get ready to meet with them, I could get you on the agenda. If it works for you, it's all right.
So do we want to meet a week from tonight?
Yeah, that's my preference.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Which would be to what day?
Twentieth.
That'd be the twentieth.
July twentieth.
What time? Here? Six-thirty?
Six-thirty.
And we can just have that for a work meeting?
That's all, yeah, just a work meeting. Don't schedule anything else.
No, no informal meetings.
None of that stuff. Let's not have that.
Good, and I'll talk with Barley and about getting you on the agenda then, and I'll let you know what time that they would love you in.
Okay.
We'd all have to go to the select board meeting?
I think they'd love it if you can.
Well, I guess it would...
We've got to have solidarity.
It'd look better when the whole board is there. If you've got something else, that's okay.
So your homework...
I gotta go, I gotta find that document. Must be under my bed. Now, what pages do they want us to...
Page two.
Page two they want us to talk about?
Okay.
Hope I can find mine.
Mine's underneath my bed.
Me too. I think I left mine on the floor. I think I brought it with me, and my briefcase is getting heavy, so I took that out. We also have alternate chairman discussion, and I talked with Wilma about that she feels that we need to designate an alternate chairman.
I just think the minutes should reflect that you all have agreed on having Bob and Paul do this. I mean, they're going to be away so much, we really need to know. You know, it just leaves three of you, and we need four people to meet for them.
Bob can fly home. We can't require Paul to fly home, but Bob can fly.
Sounds good.
What the hell do you do with it?
Not flying anywhere with that Volkswagen bus. Oh, I'm talking about Bob Wagner. That thing goes slow.
Any other business?
Are you in the building?
Me or them? As the alternate? But if I'm going, how can I be the alternate?
Well, that's the question.
I guess I'll do it.
There you go. That's a good man.
It works because if Bob Wagner's away in the summer and you're here in the summer...
There you go. See, that's a good...I don't know, where is he? Where is he?
Between you, he's...
Does he...he has a family member that's sick or something like that? I think he's...
No, he's retired and he's living at the Cape this summer.
Isn't he taking care of someone, though, that's sick?